Totally, I was a low talker. Good evening, thank you very much for coming today. As we said, I'm Adriana Spazito, executive director. Whoa. I, um...
It's too dark.
I might be in the dark about the issue of water.
Yeah.
Wait, so are you gonna turn the lights off and I'll stand over here? What's going on?
Whatever is easier to see the presentation, whatever you prefer.
Okay, let's, let's, let's do an audience poll. How about that?
Okay.
So turn the lights off.
I don't think it's...
Participation.
I think it's too dark with...
Is it too dark? Say yes or no.
Don't touch me!
I bet it's definitely, it's definitely what we're hoping for, wants to know if I can talk in the dark. And I said, "I'm talking in the dark." Oh, no, they're all just...
I know.
All right, so we'll go this way, um, from the end, maybe it'll be, we'll see how comfortable you are. But anyway, just so you know, uh, citizens' campaign invited, we just celebrated our 40th birthday. It's hard for me to say that because literally I must have started when I was 10, right? So, we have 40 years of work here on Long Island and throughout the state of New York protecting the quality and quantity of drinking water. And I'm gonna talk fast tonight because I only have 15 minutes, but I'm gonna use my Brooklyn speed talking, but I promise not to, you know, go race. Um, we're gonna talk about, next slide, two particular chemicals that you might have been hearing a lot about in the news. And they're called emerging contaminants. And the biggest one is PFOS. Not gonna give you the fact that it's a floral, floral, a polyfluoroalkylized substance, but literally there are thousands of different types of this chemical. Next one. And this chemical, um, is called a forever chemical because unfortunately it doesn't break down in nature, especially in water. It lasts for a really long time and the more we put into our water or into the, um, environment, the more it builds up in quantity. It's a particularly pesty chemical. It's also particularly toxic chemical. And, uh, New York is one of the first states in the nation. We adopted a drinking water standard in August of 2020 of 10 parts per trillion. Now, just so you know, parts per trillion is a really low number. That's how toxic this is. Most chemicals are in parts per billion or parts per million. This one is so toxic, there's a drinking water standard in the state of New York of parts per trillion. Next, please. Where does it come from? I have bad news, everywhere. Um, PFOS is in things like carpet, as you can see there, cookware, as you can see there. It's in artificial turf that are now filling all of our, uh, fields that we have the kids play soccer on and baseball and football. It's in, um, things like, uh, textiles, baby's toys, baby car seats, women's healthcare products, and so much more. Next. Now luckily, New York's been doing some work on this, all right? We got to work quickly. That's why we like our assembly members so much. Uh, that was just one reason. For instance, one of the main, uh, places that PFOS was founded is firefighting foam. I want you to say very quickly PFOS is found in firefighting foam because I have to learn how to do that. Um, so then when the old days, not the old days, but recently even, when they went to put out fires and use that foam, it was, it was really smothering PFOS all over. That PFOS would then seep into our groundwater and pollute our groundwater because on Long Island, 100% of our drinking water comes from?
The ground.
Aquifers. Whoever said that, you get an A, I can't see you, but I'm giving you an A anyway. Underneath our feet, 100% comes underneath your feet. Whatever we put on the ground seeps down and pollutes that aquifer underneath. So, we banned firefighting foam in New York. Also PFOS used to be found in fast food wrappers. You think you just have a taco from Taco Bell? No! That wrapper was filled with PFOS so that you, it didn't stick. PFOS is great for not allowing things to stick. That's why it's in your Teflon cookware. That's why it wasn't food wrappers. This is like the movies, like you can't see so they have the ushers with the flashlights. Um, okay, so we've been doing some work there, keep going. Next. Ah, but does Long Island have to worry about PFOS? Yes. Yes, we do. This is a map, let me just explain it real quick here, of Long Island. I know you got that far. But the green means that, uh, this is 2023 data. This is data that was supplied by all the drinking water suppliers across Long Island. So green means that they were good, that they had PFOS below 4 parts per trillion. I'll explain that in a minute, in a minute. Below 4. Red means that they have PFOS above 10 parts per trillion. And the yellow is for all the water districts between 4 and 10. Where did I get the 4 from? Well, I'm gonna tell you. Next slide. Oh, well, okay, my slides are not working, sorry. Where I got the 4 from is that the, uh, US EPA came out last year in April and said, finally, we only worked with them to get this done for like eight years. They're like, you know what? We're gonna have a federal, first time ever in America, we're gonna have a federal drinking water standard for PFOS. And this chemical is so toxic that we're gonna put the federal standard at 4 parts per trillion. And it's being phased in now till, uh, between now and 2029. So currently, in New York State, the drinking water standard is 10. By 2029, in four years from now, it's gonna come down to 4 parts per trillion if the EPA isn't abolished and if that standard is not backtracked on. And actually, we do have that fear and we are already, um, in meetings and already sent lots of correspondence to our new EPA director about not backing down from that standard. So, thank you. Um, okay, the other chemical I wanted to just mention to you is 1-4 dioxide, another new emerging chemical. And it was so weird, this is again, a man-made chemical. It's listed by the US EPA as a likely carcinogen. Do we have it on Long Island? Yes, yes we do. And in fact, when the US EPA asked 4,400 water suppliers across America to finally test for 1-4 dioxide, who do you think, what region had the highest levels of 1-4 dioxide anywhere in the nation? Long Island. And in particular, Nassau County. Sorry. You are always weird, it's good enough. So that was alarming to us. And then as we looked at the data, we mapped the data, can we go to the next one? Do we have the map up here? No, okay, we'll just stay, you can stay there, I'm sorry. Um, we were like, where is all this 1-4 dioxide coming from? Some was coming from industry, but then they were all like these little parts, like there was like 10 here, or 4, or 2. My talk had 2 parts per billion, they don't have any industry. So then we did some deep dive research and we found some things in the literature saying that common household products have 1-4 dioxide. And you know, we drank from the underground drinking water supply, so particularly in Suffolk, but still some places in Nassau, if you, um, you know, have a private well or septic system or there's a sewage treatment plant that discharges into the groundwater, any product that you're using that has 1-4 dioxide is going into the groundwater. So we were like, how much 1-4 dioxide could these products possibly have? So we decided to test them ourselves. We got a grant, we went, we did some research, worked with some of the most common products in America, and we pulled them off the shelves of grocery stores. 80 common household products, laundry soaps, bath gels, uh, baby bath products, dish soap that you stick your hands in and you use every day. And remember, the drinking water standard right now in New York, but this, the standard didn't exist when we, when we did this study. No, don't go yet, you ruined my whole presentation present thing here. Suspense is like a big deal. So, um, there was no drinking water standard when we did this. So we tested all these products and we found 65 of 80 of them had 1-4 dioxide. And you might be like, well, how much 1-4 dioxide could one bottle of Tide actually have? We have the answer! Next. Uh, wow. This is called the Dirty Dozen. The worst, believe it or not, was Victoria's Secret Bath Joe. We now know Victoria's Secret, she's poisoning us, okay? 17,000 parts per billion. Yes, 16,000 parts per billion. Tide, Tide, the most common product of, or most common laundry soap in America. 14,000 parts per billion. And I just know not as pure as the driven snow, I tell ya. 1,000 parts per million. But the one we flipped out about was DRAF. DRAF, for those of you don't know, is the laundry detergent that pediatricians tell every mom when she has a newborn, you should use DRAF. Well, no, okay? 11,000 parts per billion. All right, Baby Magic, I grew up in Baby Magic Bubble Band, that explains my life behavior. 7,600 parts per billion. So we were like blown away by this. So we did a shot, oh wait, but, but can I keep going, one more slide? But there is some good news. We have the Green 15. Uh, things like Avino, Burt's Bees, uh, Baby Gynix, um, Dove. I don't know Dove, Dove was good, we liked Dove, we didn't like it, just didn't have 1-4 dioxide in it. Uh, Seventh Generation came out really good. Nature's Promise, Nature Kept Our Promise, that was good. Um, so we had some, and we actually purposely tested these ones that say they're all clean to see if they were, and we were happy to say that they are. So, after we did this, we were like, okay, we have to write a bill and ban 1-4 dioxide from products, or at least limit it. And I'm not gonna go into that whole story, but people thought we were crazy. But fortuitously, uh, we got a bill sponsor in the Senate Assembly, next slide. And oh, this is to show you where all 1-4 dioxide it was, this is, uh, or still is in 2023. All of the red is over the New York's drinking water standard of 1 part per billion. You can see Nassau County is, you know, less with 1-4 dioxide. Keep going. Okay, I wanted you to know your specific, your districts, okay? That's what this is all leading to. So those in Liberty Water, we have Liberty Water here. This is the 2023 data. Okay, 2024 data, uh, for the annual water supply statement isn't due out till May 15. So 1-4 dioxide was 1.3, not, not that bad because this drinking water standard is 1. PFOWER, 11, drinking water standard is 10. And PFOS, good, 5.6, drinking water standard again is 10. But when the federal drinking water standard comes online, that PFOWER and PFOS will be above the 4 parts per trillion that the feds are going to be hopefully enforcing. The Water Authority of Western New York, 1-4 dioxide, .86 in under the wire. PFOS, not so good. 33 when the drinking water standard is 10. PFOS, not so good. 17 when the drinking water standard is 10. So, that's the facts. Next one. Uh, the EPA, as I said, came out with that new standard and what they declared was there's no, we actually were shocked by this, we've never seen the EPA do this. No safe drinking water standard for PFOS chemicals in water. And in fact, they issued a health advisory of .004 parts per trillion, which is saying it's not safe. And they don't, they told us, because we've met with them, they had to do that because they had to have some measurement. Next. Okay. Next slide. Okay, I already told you this, the drinking water standard, keep going, next? Okay, but we've had, like, there's some good news, so that you're not morose and, you know. So, the drinking water standard of 10 is in place. Uh, we have been working really hard to get, uh, grants, funding that the state and both assembly reps here have been extremely supportive of this, um, to allow for state funding to go to the local water supply districts and pay for the filtration devices needed for 1-4 dioxide and PFOS. Because unfortunately, it's two different devices and it's also very expensive. So, there's been a lot of good progress there. Um, and there were special funds for this as well. I don't know if we're still gonna have federal funds, but there was federal funds, um, two months ago when we presented this. Next. Okay, we just wanted you to know too, that when the EPA's drinking water standard of 4 PPT goes into effect, it will affect 1 million more people on Long Island. And what I mean is, of all of Long Island, there's 1 million people drinking between 4, which will be the new standard, and 10, which is the current standard. So 1 million more people will get captured with that new standard, and that's a great thing. Next. So we wanted you to know, I don't know why my staff always uses this photo, but this is me hanging over the ledge at the Assembly, waiting for them to vote on the 1-4 dioxide bill at 10:30 at night. They did vote, they passed the bill saying you have to limit the amount of 1-4 dioxide in common household products. No other state in the nation had ever did this. This was one of the most fun campaigns we ever did, I, I'm just not even gonna lie. Uh, because every industry on the planet, Dow Chemical, Lysol, they're wandering around all over saying, "You can't do this, you can't do this, we're gonna pull products off the shelf, it's gonna increase prices, are you guys crazy?" So we're like, no, you have to give us a valid ban gel, it's not causing us cancer, that's just the way it is. So they passed the bill and the ban took effect fully in 2024. Don't go yet. But we didn't believe that industry, we were like, they're not complying with this. Like, how do I know they no longer have 1-4 dioxide in the products? Like, how do I know? So we dragged a couple of products off the shelf and we tested them ourselves. And you know what we found? They're in compliance. Next one. Yes, that's what we did. We were like, oh my God, no, no, keep going. Here it is, look at this. Tide had 14,000, after the law went to effect, 205. That's amazing. Uh, gain 10,000 to 188 and draft 127. So legislation works. Procter and Gamble News, they did a big story on this. Procter and Gamble told a reporter, "Yeah, you know what we did? Since we had to make a change for New York, we decided to use the new formulation all over North America." So you're welcome, Canada. You're welcome, Texas. Keep going. Last thing I'm gonna say is now we're working on a law, uh, both assembly members support this law to ban PFOS from common everyday products that I mentioned at the beginning of this talk. Get them out of the frying pan, get them out of the carpet, get them out of the children's, uh, car seat. Can we put the lights on for a moment? I just wanna say this too, um, this is a...
Shield your eyes, please.
Yeah.
Hold on, shut your eyes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a, the shop wall. Oh, there's so many more of you than when I started. Um, but this bill is really significant because it will, uh, ban intentionally added PFOS in those common products that you come into contact with every single day. And I just wanna say this one last thing because it's of interest. So the cookware industry has gone crazy. They're like, wait, we don't want this bill. And so the Senate last year, thank goodness there's no senators here, so we yell at them. They passed the bill, but they took cookware out of the bill. And I said, what person, what member of the public in New York State went to visit their senator and said, "You know what? I'm against PFOS, but I do wanna keep it in my frying pan. I really want a side of PFOS with my scrambled eggs for breakfast." No one is saying that! So, we've been talking to the Senate this year, I'm telling them to not buckle under the weight. Just like all of those manufacturers of 1-4 dioxide had a scary and said they were gonna take products off the shelf and it was gonna increase costs. None of that was true. All of it was a lie. They reformulated, we didn't even notice, we had to test it to believe it. So, public support, legislation works, and we can make change, but we have a long way to go. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Spazito, for helping us out, and for legislation and fighting for our people. Next, we're gonna hear from the D E C. Thank you.
I've never been accused of being quiet either, but I'm not quite as loud as Adrian because I have no voice, I have no voice, I've been fine in this call. So, my name is Sue Gia Patton. I work for the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation in the Division of Water, and I thank you very much for coming out tonight and listening to us. I'm 1-4, the people are gonna be speaking with you tonight, so thank you for your time. So I'm gonna talk with you about the water quality, if you'd go to the next slide for me. So, as Adrian said, there obviously are emerging contaminants in the water. There's other, um, pollutants of concern that we have, nitrogen phosphorus, bacteria, a variety of pollutants. What we are gonna be focusing on tonight, um, is the nitrogen in the, in the ground and the surface water. It's a very serious concern on Long Island and it causes problems such as arid lago blooms, fish kills, excuse me, degraded wetlands, hypoxia, a variety of other issues. If you just go to the next slide. So what are those sources of nitrogen? Because the biggest source is human waste, whether it's from wastewater treatment plants or if it's from cesspools and septic systems that don't treat the waste properly. Also fertilizer, be that residential like on your lawn or from agriculture, um, and stormwater runoff. Those are the biggest sources of nitrogen on Long Island, but by far it's the human waste. Go to the next slide. So these slides, you really can't see it really well, so I'm gonna go by them. What we're doing is we're just trying to show you, um, like, when we have the high nitrogen in the water, what happens and how badly it looks. It causes wetlands which, um, absorb the energy from bad storms to help protect the land. They get degraded as well as, you can't see it, but the water quality is really poor. So go ahead to the next slide. And this is just showing that, um, you know, as you know, you all drink the, the water that's in the ground and if the cesspools and septic systems are putting waste into the groundwater, then that is ultimately something that has to be treated before you can use it. So go ahead to the next slide. Okay, so what are we doing about it? So in 2015, um, the legislative delegation from Long Island, as well as many advocates, came to Albany and said, "We really need to be focusing on this as a state." And so they passed, um, in that, that, excuse me, that budget, $5 million for us to start a program called the Long Island Action Plan. And what that allowed us to do is we went out, we had many, many public meetings and heard from stakeholders like, what is the concern you have and how, how do you want us to address that? So we've been very successful, if you go to the next slide. Um, with this program, we started out with four goals and that was to assess the nitrogen, um, to identify the sources, to have our reduction endpoints, so like, where, where are we gonna end up? How do we know that we've had success? And then to actually do something to implement plans. And we've been working on this for the past 10 years and the flower on the right is, what we're trying to show you there is that it's been a huge partnership from local, local entities, county, state, and federal. So we have everybody involved, um, working on it. Next slide. So this is just a list of some of the things that we've accomplished. Um, the, the first bullet, um, talks about watershed plans and what that's really important is each county has their own watershed plan and that allows us then to implement actions to improve the water quality. We've been working extensively on the septic replacement and also on searing, um, doing work on, um, reducing the amount of fertilizer that people use as well as other, other things, but I'm gonna move along because of the time. And I'm going to, um, now give the, the mic to Andy Farah, who's gonna talk to you about the Bay Park, which is an absolutely amazing project to clean up our own channel.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Andy Farah. I'm also with the New York State D E C and I am the project director for the Bay Park Conveyance Project. So Sue started talking a lot about how nitrogen is kind of like the flagship contaminant for surface waters. And in the Western Bays, we've estimated that the nitrogen loading is approximately 90% due to wastewater treatment plants. I'm gonna start by saying that a, after Sandy, the South Shore Water Reclamation Facility, which is formerly the Bay Park Wastewater Treatment Plant, was largely reconstructed, a little over $800 million to put into that facility. And it is a, a great wastewater treatment plant in, in this era. However, when, when you're treating over 50 million gallons per day, there's just only so much that you can do to get that kind of quantity from, from loading those contaminants. So we took a closer look at, what, what else can we do with this effluent, the, the treated wastewater, uh, to keep that nitrogen from entering and loading up in the Western Bays where the natural mixing capabilities are just minimal, uh, due to, you know, low movement of, of water. So, we came up with this concept called the Conveyance Project, where on this map here, you can see, we're starting on the bottom left, which is the, uh, Bay Park neighborhood there. And we started looking that there's an abandoned aqueduct which resides under Sunrise Highway, it was installed in about 1905, originally for drinking water. And, um, so once we have a conduit from there, we realized that it'd actually be feasible if we were to pump that effluent from the South Shore Facility over to the Cedar Creek Water Pollution Control Plant. It's another, uh, major wastewater plant in Nassau County. The advantage over at Cedar Creek, Cedar Creek has an ocean outfall which sends that treated wastewater a couple miles offshore in a diffuser array, which between the, the diffusion in, in length and the mixing capabilities and, and movement of the water out in the ocean, that nitrogen is able to just naturally dissipate without impacting the water quality the same way that it does in the Western Bays. So, we can move on to the next slide now. So the project, as I said, is, is conveying that effluent, so how do we do that? Uh, we, we call that a forest main, which is a, a pressurized pipe. So we started at the South Shore Water Reclamation Facility here and we constructed a pump station with a capacity of 75 million gallons per day, so that'll catch those, uh, wet weather surges that we see and be able to capture the, the general capacity of that plant. And it's, it's a lo, it's an 11-mile pipeline. So you'd think if you're going to cut open and, and install a pipeline for 11 miles through basically the center of Nassau County, people would be pretty frustrated with that open trench and the amount of time that it would take. So we came up with a, a couple, uh, unique technologies that are kind of rare even, even now. Um, we can move on to the next slide. We started with microtunneling. So those vertical alignments on the map, on the first slide, which is really the north-south direction from both plants up and down from Sunrise Highway, we use a microtunnel boring machine and all of this work was done, we call it trenchless. So the only location that you would actually see our work would have been from the, um, the, the shaft sites. We call these microtunneling shafts that you see on the left. And we use a tunnel boring machine that launches from one shaft and the pipe gets installed as the machine advances. So as that machine gets to the shaft site, uh, all the pipe is installed behind it. Similarly, we can go to the next slide. Uh, on Sunrise Highway, we did exclusively night work to try and keep traffic impacts to a minimum. Uh, the, the aqueduct is unfortunately directly under Sunrise Highway. So for the period of about three years, we were closing two lanes from 9:00 PM till 6:00 AM and installing a new fireglass pipe inside that 120-year-old steel lockguard joint pipe. So that actually went really well, we finished out of schedule. We were done, uh, last summer in approximately the July timeframe. So these are some photos here where we're getting close to wrapping up those 7.3 miles of, of pipe that was installed. And we can go to the next slide here. So how's it ultimately work? Uh, we have a, what's called a receiving tank, that picture all the way on the left. So the forest main fills that tank and it works just like a water tower would. From there, effectively, just gravity flows into the ocean outfall and joins the treated wastewater from the Cedar Creek Facility. So we can go on to the next slide here. Um, I just wanted to talk a little bit about progress. So we started the design on this project officially, uh, in March of 2021. And as of today, we are about 85% complete. All of the pipe has been installed, the pump station, as you saw on the second slide there, is, uh, basically complete. There's some exterior work. And, uh, we look to start testing that system probably sometime this summer. So great progress, looking to, by the end of the year, be reducing that, that nitrogen loading of the Western Bays by as much as 90, 95%. And that, along with some, uh, additional projects that are being tackled in the same vein, should dramatically improve, uh, the nitrogen levels in the water quality in the Bays. So, last couple of numbers here, um, for those that, that may live near the project, you'll see, we're out there restoring sites right now. Uh, we've made a significant effort in terms of restoration. So far, nearly 400 trees, 200 shrubs have been, uh, restored. So trying to return those shaft sites, uh, to an even greener, uh, condition than we encountered them. So with that, the last slide here. So this, this project is part of what we call the Western Bay Resiliency Initiative. There are two other projects here that are, that are worth highlighting. Uh, the Long Beach Wastewater Treatment Plant is also part of this. Uh, the Long Beach Plant has had challenges for years. And that plant is currently being, uh, converted to a pump station only so that, that raw wastewater is going to the South Shore or Bay Park Facility, where it will be treated and joining the effluent and conveyed over to the Cedar Creek Ocean Outfall. And then the Point Lookout, uh, Sewer Feasibility Study, another effort to, um, Sewer District, which otherwise is largely on the septic.
Can you go to the next slide? So to continue on talking about what we're doing about nitrogen, so let's go to the next slide, is the Long Island Action Agenda. So you recall me talking about lineup, Long Island Action Plan, we started 10 years ago. And those goals that are listed up there is what I was talking about previously, that are the goals of the plan. And we completed those little goals. We, we've touched everything, we've done everything, but as with all environmental problems, we're not quite... we're not quite done yet. So we need to put in place a new 10-year plan to keep the progress going, to keep the programs that we're working on going, and then add new ones as well. So that's what our plan is, if you just go to the next slide. So the Long Island Nitrogen Action Plan dealt with nitrogen only, but now we're gonna do the Long Island Action Agenda, and that's gonna include more than just nitrogen. So we're gonna look at habitat, we're gonna look at sustainability and resource, those types of things. Next slide. So the four main goals of the Action Agenda is clean water, healthy habitats, sustainable groundwater resources, and an inspired, engaged public. So each goal has many actions underneath it, but that's the big picture of it. And we've been working to write this plan with key stakeholders across the island, and we call them our Long Island Action Agenda Implementation Committee. We chose the word "implementation committee" because when we get this plan done, we're gonna be doing work to implement it. You know me. So where are we? So we've written the plan with our stakeholders. It's going through DEC review right now. We anticipate getting out for public comment in the first part of this year, and then we'll address any public comments and finalize the plan by the end of the year. That's what we're anticipating. And then the fun begins. Then we actually get to take that plan, break it down, and start implementing actions to improve water quality. And I think next is Chris with... Oh, sorry. I'll just leave you with, if you have questions, I don't know if you can see it up there, but there's our email and then our QR code. So you can always use the QR code to learn more about the program and also sign up for our newsletter. I think that's my last slide. Go ahead, you can just go to the next one.
And Sue. Evening, everybody. My name is Chris Engelhardt. I'm a regional engineer in the Stony Brook office of the DEC, which covers Nassau and Suffolk Counties. And I'm gonna talk a little bit about what we call the Long Island Groundwater Sustainability Project. Thank you. So basically, back before, as Adrian mentioned, everybody on Long Island gets their water, whether it's drinking water or water for any other purpose, from groundwater. There are some 2.8, I think it's approaching 2.9 million residents of Nassau and Suffolk County. So back before 2016, we decided that we needed a tool to make better water management decisions, more scientifically-based decisions that were more supportable. So we engaged with the United States Geological Survey to develop a model that would allow us to evaluate how the aquifer system responds to different stresses. The ultimate goal, to ensure that there's a plentiful supply of water for all the 2.9 million residents of Long Island. In this context, when I say Long Island, I mean Nassau and Suffolk County. In the context of the project, overall, Long Island is really the island. Nassau, Suffolk, Queens, and Brooklyn. So the study's been done in three phases. The first phase is focusing on Western, or has focused on Western Long Island. And that would be Queens, Brooklyn, and Nassau. Phase two is focused on Eastern Long Island, that would be Suffolk County. And phase three is kind of island-wide to fill the data gaps that we discovered during the first two phases. Next slide, please. Okay, so I don't know if you can see this, but these two figures just show some of the data collection locations. Each phase of the model involves, on the part of the USGS, drilling, boring drilling, installation of wells. Mostly these wells go all the way down to bedrock. Data collection from the borings and from the wells, incorporation of any of this data collected into the model, and then recalibration of the model. The figure shows new boring well locations that the USGS performed specifically or as part of this project. Next slide, please. This figure just, so those were new well locations, but there was quite an existing, quite an extensive network of existing wells already in place. The figure on the left shows wells from which, wells and borings from which data was collected and input into the model, used to calibrate the model. The figure on the right shows, the blue dots depict well locations from which groundwater level data was collected and input into the model. And I don't know if you can really see it, but there are some red triangles there that represent stream flows. So both water table data, as well as stream flow data, was input in and used to calibrate the model. And I should point out, I didn't really point it out, but the model is really a state-of-the-art, one, maybe two of its own model, that's really unlike anything that's out there in terms of its capabilities. Next slide, please. So capabilities. Like I said, the purpose of the model is to be able to use it to predict how the aquifer system will respond to different stresses. These stresses can be man-made stresses, they can be natural. Naturally occurring stresses, an example of a man-made stress is pumping groundwater out of the system. An example of a naturally occurring stress would be a drought. All of this stuff and a lot more goes into this. The DEC intends to use this as a general guide to, so that we can make better decisions in terms of permitting, because we do issue permits for water withdrawal, whether it's for drinking water or another purpose. The model right now, Phase One, the model is and will continue to be publicly available. Although, to use the model, you really need to be an experienced modeler. There aren't many people out there that are. It's not simply enough to be technical, or to be a scientist, or an engineer. You need to be a modeler. And I briefly talked about, you know, the stresses that go into the model, the output. What we're looking at are things like how the freshwater-saltwater interface moves in response to the stresses. What the water table does, the elevation, the depth of water, how that might impact wetland areas, water levels at different, this is not really intuitive, but water levels at different depths throughout the aquifer, and hydrologic budgets. So we can look at, in a particular area, where water is coming into that area, where it's going from that area. Next slide, please. So like I said, or I don't know if I said this, but Phase One of the model was released last summer. It is, it's on a publicly available website. DEC, right now, we're in the process of evaluating the results of that model of Phase One. Our focus right now is on saltwater intrusion. I mentioned the saltwater, freshwater interface. I think I have a couple of slides in a bit that might give you a visual, at least a two-dimensional visual of what that would look like. So we're focusing on saltwater intrusion because it's a very important topic for coastal communities that keep their drinking water from coastal areas. One of the findings of the model, however, is that from an overall water quality perspective, the amount of, the overall amount of water in the aquifer system has not changed substantially since pre-development times. So that's a good thing. And as far as localized concerns are concerned, DEC is going, you know, we started to, and we're gonna be reaching out to water suppliers as we review the model scenarios and starting to talk about how to plan for this as we move forward. Next slide, please. All right, so this, I don't know how well you can see this, but basically, this is Southern Nassau County. That kind of light-colored strip that goes left to right is the Long Beach Barrier Island, and the dashed lines represent the position of the saltwater interface in a particular layer of the model. This layer in this figure happens to be the deepest layer of the deepest aquifer, which is the lower aquifer. The dotted line at the bottom of the figure is the inferred position of the saltwater interface in 1900. The next dashed line, as you move up, which is north in the figure, is the model position of the saltwater interface in 2019. And then the next dashed line above that is what the model predicts, the location of the saltwater interface, that is predicted by the model if we continue to just do what we're doing over the next 30 years. Same pumping, same amount of rainfall, no inputs changing the model, just continue doing what we're doing. You can see that there's a kind of landward migration of the interface on the Long Beach Barrier Island. Next slide, please. And this is a similar slide, just moving a little bit west. That area in the red circle is kind of, I think that's the Ullrich Valley Stream area. Same thing, the dashed line, that is the most seaward dashed line, is the 1900 saltwater interface location. And then, as you move landward, you have the 2019 saltwater interface, and then the predicted position of the saltwater interface if we just continue pumping as we are now, if we continue, you know, same amount of rainfall, and nothing else changing. I didn't mention that when we ran the model, we ran, USGS ran several scenarios with different stresses, including changes in pumpage, changes in recharge or rainfall, and also looking at how sea level rise would impact the system. Next slide, please. So I mentioned that you need to be a modeler to use the model. You don't really, you don't need to be a modeler to view the results, though. If you want to write down that website address at the bottom, you can try that. Or you can just Google "Long Island Groundwater Sustainability Study", and the first hit will be a link to USGS's website, which has this model viewer on it, which is menu-driven, so you can just click things on and off and look at different model outputs, either the saltwater interface or the groundwater elevation. And you can kind of zoom in, zoom out, move to different parts of the model. So if anybody's interested in doing that, all the scenarios are on there. The scenario that I showed you in the two slides with the saltwater interface is really just what we call the baseline scenario, just not changing anything from what we're doing now. Next slide, please. And next steps for DEC and USGS as far as this is concerned, is just to continue the Phase Two and Three work. Phase Two, old, the drilling has been completed, and they're in the midst of the Phase Three drilling now. And there's a report that will be coming out this year on the Phase Two, what's called the framework, or whatever they discovered geologically with drilling that they're doing. And the model will be updated, and a new report coming out this year as well. DEC will continue to evaluate the model scenarios and continue to, like I said, we started the process, we're gonna continue to reach out to and have dialogue with water suppliers and other stakeholders to ensure that there is a, you know, long-term, sustainable supply of groundwater for Long Island. And that's all I have. I'm gonna pass it off to Logan, who is going to talk about money.
All right. Sorry about that. We'll be quick. I apologize, we're already over. So Sue, Andy, Chris here, they're the experts. I do Legislative Affairs for DEC. I just want to say thank you to Senator Andrew Salage, Senator McGriff, and Legislature Salage for hosting this. Thank you very much. I'm here to just talk briefly about the state's investments in water quality and Governor Hochul's investments in water quality. Next slide, please. So these are the projects that we talked about here today. The Bay Park Conveyance Project, that nearly $170 million figure. That's the state's commitment. It is over a, it's a $500 million project. The rest of the financing is coming from the Environmental Facilities Corporation. That's a New York State entity as well. The groundwater sustainability project that Chris spoke about, there is a $900 million commitment from the state on that. That's the state's share. And the Water Quality Improvement Program, that's a DEC program that essentially gets water money out the door. Nearly $100 million since 2015 has been spent from that program in Nassau and Suffolk County alone. Next slide, please. Clean Water Infrastructure Act. This is the primary water funding mechanism, or a primary water funding mechanism in New York. Governor Hochul recently proposed in her executive budget, another $500 million for this program, bringing the total since 2017 to $6 billion. CWI programs, DEC disperses funds for a variety of programs, which include the WQIP program, as well as the State Superfund Program. Some money from CWIA goes to that as well to help clean up hazardous waste sites. There is also a proposal in the governor's budget to extend that program, which is an important program for Long Island. And then there's just some more information on WQIP right there. $222 million has, or excuse me, was awarded in 2024, just through that one program. Next slide, please. Just real briefly, some more information on the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation. It's kind of an organization that not many people know about. EFC is basically New York State's Water Infrastructure Bank. It is a state entity and a public benefit corporation. DEC partners with EFC to provide financing to municipalities for wastewater projects. And then on disadvantaged communities, DEC is committed to understaffed and vulnerable populations, and providing remedies for communities that may be burdened by negative environmental consequences, while increasing accessibility of competitive grant funding to those communities. And that's shown here by the fact that 87% of funding in the last round of that WQIP program, as well as other programs, have gone to DAX. Next slide, almost done. These are just a few things that we've talked about, what the state is doing to address water quality issues on Long Island. These are just a few things that you yourself can do as a Long Islander. If you're not fertilizing, don't start. Shrink your lawn and use sustainable landscaping methods. Keep grass puttings on your lawn so that you can use less fertilizer. Use rain sensors or smart irrigation controls. And there are also things inside your home, especially your bathroom, that you can do to reduce water usage. Go with that. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. So a lot of information that I'm sure you're all gonna have a lot of questions about. We're gonna be able to tell you where you can find out more information about all this, but thank you to the DEC. And now I'm gonna head over to Liberty Water.
We'll switch it up and move over to the side. My name's Richard Perrin. I'm the Director of Operations for Liberty Utilities. I have Natasha Niola with me, who's our Water Quality Manager. And next slide, please. So we've talked a little bit quickly about Liberty, Conservation Water Quality, which of course was merged with Contaminants Stop-Having Attacks, which talks about some inequitable taxing issues, and of course, the grant program initiatives. So if you go to the next slide. So Liberty Utilities operates four utilities, water utilities on Long Island, and 16 water utilities north of New York City and one wastewater facility. We cover the Valley Stream area, and there is a second water supplier that covers the very north Valley Stream area and into Elmont, which is the Western Nassau Water Authority. If you close one eye, you can see the canal. That's the area of our Western system, right? Right? You never notice that, right? And we have, we serve approximately 128,000 individual connections in New York, 1,200 miles of pipe, over 100 groundwater wells. And in the system which covers Valley Stream, an average day is about 18 million gallons of water produced. A summer's day is about 42 million gallons. And peak hour, which is from 3:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m., if we were to continue at that rate all day, it would be about 62 million gallons produced. Fortunately, it doesn't, that demand level doesn't stay all day, because it'd be unsustainable. We could talk a little bit more about it.
And we can talk a little bit more about that when we get to water conservation. Next slide. So we turn it over to Natasha Iola.
Thank you. So Adrian did a great job introducing all the chemicals we're going to be talking about. So the hot topic, right? PFOA and PFOS. We have been testing for PFOA and PFOS since the technology has been there. We started in, I have data as old as 2014 that we've been sampling our raw water wells for PFOA and PFOS. Back then, the technology, right, the methods weren't as keen as they are today. And we could, the technology today, we could detect up to two parts per trillion. And that's, technology is going to just get better and better over time. So as Adrian mentioned, 10 parts per trillion is the current New York State MCL. New York State, as Adrian mentioned, is, was the first to take that action and thankfully, right? So we have been testing all of our raw water wells quarterly for all of those constituents. There are about 29 PFOS species that we test on a quarterly basis, all of our raw water wells. 10 parts per trillion in just, for layman's terms, is equivalent to about 10 grains of sand in an Olympic-sized swimming pool. So super, super small in the sense of how low we can detect and those detections. The treatment for PFOA and PFOS is granular activated carbon, which is GAC. So a normal carbon filter can remove PFOA and PFOS from the drinking water. Another thing that Adrian mentioned was the upcoming regulations. So now the EPA has proposed new PFOS regulations. So not only are they lowering the limits for PFOA and PFOS from 10 parts per trillion to four parts per trillion, they're also adding four new species to that list. Those four new species are PFHXS, GenX, which is also HFPODA, PFNA, and PFBS. And those four constituents are actually, they, some of them have individual MCLs, which is a maximum contaminant limit. And then all of them are going to be basically tabulated and regulated based off a hazard index, something that the EPA has never done before. So basically, every single species has a weighted average and you calculate them all together. The hazard index is going to be one. All of this is going to be in effect and implemented by the EPA if everything, you know, as Adrian mentioned, goes. And I wrote 2020, by 2029, I wrote 2027 because it's our, from a water utility perspective, it's our job to make sure we do all of the initial monitoring in advance in 2027. And what that initial monitoring means is that we just ramp up our sampling. We actually do point of entry, which means the water, finished water going into the system, instead of sampling just the raw water sources. And I also have some maps to show you, and we'll talk a little bit more about that, too. The other emergent contaminant is 1-4-dioxane. As Adrian mentioned, the PFOA and PFOS are extremely persistent in the environment, which means they do not break down easily in the environment at all. Same thing for 1-4-dioxane. The chemical bonds for 1-4-dioxane are extremely, extremely strong, which means that regular filtration like a GAC does not remove that constituent. It actually involves UV, hydrogen peroxide, then those byproducts are carcinogenic as well. And then those get filtered by a big GAC filter. GAC again is the granular activated carbon. The testing for that is the same as PFOA and PFOS. We test all of our wells for them quarterly. Next slide. So here's. Okay. Can you hear me? Hello, hello. So here's the picture of the canal. All, I color-coded this by green and yellow. So green, every single circle, keep going, every single circle is one of our plants. All of our plants, for the most part, have more than one well. So everything in green is showing a, that the PFOA and PFOS detections are less than 25% of the MCL. So if the current MCL is 10, 25% would be 2.5 parts per trillion. So all of those greens, so you can see that there are only two yellow dots out of all of our plants where the PFOA and PFOS detections are greater than 2.5 parts per trillion. They do not exceed the 10 parts per trillion, the 10 parts per trillion limit, New York State limit. If we ever did exceed the 10 parts per trillion, we would be in violation. We would be required to notify all of our constituents. Those two plants that have the PFOA and PFOS detections are currently blended. They have multiple wells that blend down, so that water going into the system does not have levels of PFOA, PFOS greater than 25% of that MCL.
And we're currently in the planning stage of budgeting for treatment for those facilities.
And that treatment is GAC. Next slide, sorry. And then the same map for 1-4-dioxane. So at all of our plants, only one plant of the 24 plants has detections of 1-4-dioxane at above 0.25 parts per billion. Again, because of that, just greater than 25% of the MCL, obviously well below the New York State MCL, we are developing treatment and in discussions with our team to build treatment there.
Why are you saying 2.5 if the standard's one?
No, I'm just showing that, that's how low. Where all of, most of our, all of our plants are less than 25% of the MCL, which is 0.25.
I thought you said 2.5. Okay.
2.5 is for PFOA and PFOS. I really wish this mic worked a little bit, but everyone can hear me okay, right? All right. So another hot topic is lead and copper, right? So the US EPA has revised the lead and copper rule. Their overall goal, this is really was geared by what happened in Flint, Michigan years ago. So the overall goal is to remove lead pipes from the distribution system, all of the groundwater pipes that service your home by a compliance deadline. So it was promulgated as the LCRR, which is the Lead and Copper Rule revisions. There were some improvements that were made to that rule, which will be in effect 2027. So one of the first things that is required by all water utilities was to provide a service line inventory. So we had to go into our tapping records, all of our maps, and basically provide the state all of our service line material, lead, copper, galvanized.
Do you want to get closer to them?
Unknown and unknowns.
You could stand like in front, like within the crowd, so that people can hear you.
So that inventory, can you hear me? So the first portion of that was for us to submit what's called the Lead Service Line Inventory. We were required to do that by October of 2024. The next part of that regulation required us to notify all customers of a lead pipe, galvanized requiring replacement, or an unknown service line by November 15th of 2024. So there may be some of you in this room that received letters. There was tons of information on that letter to reach out to us for more information and so on and so forth. So the big part is, right, letting you know if you have a lead pipe. And what are we going to do about that? We're going to be replacing that. We're going to be required to do that. So we have what's called a Lead Replacement Program. We have been replacing lead, and Rich could talk to that far more than I can because he's around longer than me. But we have been replacing lead for decades. It's something that is a part of our every single year to do. So we target, we replace mains that are, you know, heavy lead dense areas, and we replace those service lines. And now what we're going to do as, for this regulation, is just continue to ramp that up. Another really, really key thing to share also is that we do almost 400 samples a year. We sample lead service lines, we drop piles off at customers' homes. They do what's called a first draw sample, and that is a representation if you're being exposed to lead in your drinking water. Now, keep in mind, lead is not coming from the groundwater. Like, we don't pull lead out of the ground and serve it to you. It is the result of the pipes that are in the ground. But we have a corrosion control program. So if you guys remember what happened in Flint, Michigan, is it was a all lead, a lot of very heavy lead-dense pipe area. And when the water utility changed the water source, they actually changed to a corrosive water source. And that's why everyone living in the community was exposed to lead. So we do not have corrosive water. We are not allowed to have corrosive water. We are heavily regulated by the county, and we test for it all the time. We, I tell you, in the last three years that we've done the 400 samples a year, I have sampled lead-to-lead service lines and gotten detections of, no detections of lead. And that's just showing that the water is not corroded. That doesn't mean we're not going to replace your lead service line. We will be required to do that on the company's side. But yeah, so there's so much a part of that big rule. On this slide here, if you, if you take a picture of that QR code, it brings us to our website. So there's two things you can do on that website. We can go to the next slide. It's an interactive map. So you could type in your address and it will literally tell you what records we have. Are you unknown to unknown? Are you copper to copper? Are you lead to lead? So all of that will be very specific to your address when you look that up. If you do have an unknown service line, right, you could take a picture of your water meter inside your house. And there's all different options in here, a very interactive tool where you can take a picture and it would be sent over to my team. Rich, do you have anything maybe to add or subtract to that?
Couple of things. So when Natasha speaks about lead pipes, it's not the main line in the street. It's between the main and the house. It's the service connection. And the customer owns half of the service connection and the company owns the other half. And so, but when we sample, we're sampling all of it, right, because we're taking a sample in the house. And when we, when we go into the replacement program, there is going to be some funding available if we come across a homeowner that can't afford to replace their half. There is some funding in our current rate structure to replace the customer's half of the service. The program's ramping up. We can, we're ultimately going to do several hundred a year. We'll do over 100. This year, we've been replacing lead services as we come across them since 19, in the early 1970s. Out of 125,000, there's about 5,000 service lines that our records show as probably lead. And those would be the ones that we're going to target first. And again, as Natasha says, since 2014 lead testing, we've literally done thousands of tests. And it shows that our corrosion control program works and there's no exposure. So that buys us some time because you're not going to change 5,000 service lines in a year, okay? The other thing.
I just wanted to add one more thing before we go into conservation. I think that's the next topic we're going to talk about, just to add to what our panelists said. Well, they had talked about nitrogen. The DSA talked about the nitrogen project and how nitrogen is, you know, an environmental concern. I just want you to know from a groundwater perspective, it's something that is regulated for us. We test for all different types of nitrogen. We do nitrate, nitrate, ammonia. It's something that you would see on your annual water quality report, and we are nowhere near what the state limit would be. Another thing that they also talked about was saltwater intrusion. Obviously, that is a very big concern here on Long Island, right? We have water on all sides of us. We are required to sample chlorides as well every single quarter. All of those wells that are close to the shores, we actually sample all of those wells on a monthly basis to ensure that there is no saltwater intrusion. So just to piggyback to what the other panelist said.
And we're going to be looking very closely with the DEC, the model. We have a meeting set up so that we can understand the impact. We take over 20,000 water samples a year. It's actually probably closer to 30,000 samples per year. And how many different constituents do you analyze for?
Thousands, thousands.
Like a thousand different chemicals. So it's very comprehensive. I will add that, Adrian, to your point, the places that we've seen PFOA are places that didn't have sewers. And so it directly chose the pathway. Fortunately, this Western NASTO has been seored longer, and so we don't really see it as much. Although we do have a place where we can't explain why, you know, it's not in the surrounding wells, but it's, we're starting to detect that. And so we're following that, we're planning for it, and we will be installing treatment to do that. All right, let's go on to the next slide. As you can imagine, we have some very lively conversations that launch about water quality because there's a lot to it. And we're lucky to have Natasha because she's on top of her game. So then we talk about water demand. What percentage do you think of the water we produce every year is used for lawn watering or lawn irrigation, lawn sprinkler, whatever you want to call it? Just throw a number out. Yeah, about 40% of what we produce on a summer's day. I didn't plant them there. I'm just kidding. On a given summer's day, probably 50% on a given day, on a hot day, is used for lawn irrigation. What time of the day do you think the peak demand is?
Morning.
Yeah, 4:16 in the morning. Don't ask me how I know, but looking at the charts. And knowing that every, every well you have is running, every pump's running, and you're just watching the pressure go down. And it's critical, right? Everybody can't water at the same time. Overall daily usage has been fairly stable, but I will tell you, peak hour gets worse and worse and worse. And it's causing poor performance in lawn sprinklers, but it's also causing poor pressure. And that's a really inconvenience. That's one of the number one complaints we get in the summer from our customers. So what are we doing about it? Well, first of all, we're trying to educate the public. We've partnered with the Long Island Irrigation Association, which is a trade group that trains irrigation contractors. We're trying to make them aware of this. We're talking about, you know, odd-even watering things that we've been talking about for years. But we may have to revisit lawn watering times. It's by orders, it's not allowed 10:00 AM to 4:00 and odd-even. But I think if this peak hour trend continues, there's going to have to be more discussion like about time of day rates, similar to what the electric utility is doing to try to spread out demand. So what else can we do? So we developed a zone map, and if you go on our website, it's on there. We're trying to propose, instead of everybody watering between 3:00 in the morning and 6:00 in the morning or 7:00 in the morning, that if you look on a map, they're color-coded, it is four zones. And it tries to get you to start at like 11 o'clock at night, to 1:00, from 1:00 to 3:00, from 3:00 to 6:00, and so forth, to break up that demand a little bit. The other thing is that we're, if you go to the next slide, we are, we have a program called Shore Control where we can, you can order smart irrigation controllers that, at a reduced cost, and some other items, drip irrigation and eligible products. And what that does is a smart, a normal irrigation controller, if you have a sprinkler company come in and set your system up and they turn it on the last week in April, if it's not a smart controller, it waters the same schedule all year. And you know that from April to mid-June, you don't need as much water. And from mid-September to the end of October, you don't need as much water. And so a smart controller can customize the amount of water used, the amount of time. And our customers that use it in the shoulder season, spring and fall, have saved somewhere in the area 30% on irrigation. Next slide. I think that's it. Okay, so real quick, we're going to give it to Steve. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. This is our last slide. I wanted to, I'm sorry? Oh, we do have one more speaker. I apologize. Well, this is our last slide. And before we get to the next speaker. So we were talking about a lot of different projects, different treatments and different avenues to clean up the water. And all of these things cost money, right? So what we're trying to do as a privately-held water utility, we don't currently have access to state grant funding for a lot of these water infrastructure projects. New York State is one of the few states that doesn't have access. Most of the states that we work in do have this access. So I wanted to thank Assemblyman McSillage for introducing a bill this year into the assembly to allow Liberty the ability to access this water infrastructure funding. This, if we were able to get this funding, we'd be able to continue these projects that we talked about without having to go to customer rates to do these projects. So this is just another avenue for the water company to continue these great projects and bring the highest quality water in service to you all. and bring the highest-quality water and service to you all. So, that's it for me.
Thank you very much. Thank you for Liberty Water. And now, I am going to hear from our last panelist from Operation Splash.
Can we please start the lights out?
Rob is shy.
I'm shy, yeah. There we go. All right, so, my name is Rob Buck. I'm president of Operation Splash. And I know that we were talking about pollution, thank you, in the bays, nitrogen pollution in the bays. We're here to talk about marine debris and how you guys can help put us out of business. We've been trying for 35 years to put ourselves out of business and hopefully you can help. This is just a nice picture. We have a lot of nice pictures of colors, though. But this is how we work. We bring our boats to beaches, locations. We bring all kinds of people out to see for themselves the type of pollution that's at the bays. Next slide, please. Operation Splash started in 1990 by one woman, Joanne Grover. She came home from college and wanted to save the world. And her father said, "Well, you live in Freeport, there's a lot of garbage in Freeport. Why don't you start right in your hometown?" And with a leaky boat and an old smoky motor, she started Operation Splash. And now, 35 years later, we've removed more than 3 million pounds of trash from our bays, the South Shore bays. And just keep something in mind real quick, it takes 42 plastic water bottles to equal one pound. So, you know, that's a lot of garbage out there. Next slide, please. The area that we cover is about 32 miles coastline from the Nassau-Queens border all the way to Exeter State Park and over 54,500 acres of wetlands, beaches, and salt marshes. It's a pretty large area. Next slide, please. Okay, so, every year, every time our vessels go out, and we have eight cleanup vessels, the captains are required to fill out a log sheet. And from those log sheets, we gather a very important data that tells us what's out in the bay and how it's getting there. So, in five years' time, we totaled up some data that's very significant. Just for your information, we're all volunteers at Operation Splash. I'm the president, I'm a volunteer, I clean the bathrooms, I paint boat planks, it's no big deal. But in that amount of time, in five years, we made 2,561 boat trips out into the bays to pick up garbage. Over 7,600 hours, 31,985 volunteer hours, and the total weight was 699,901 pounds. We weigh all the garbage that we get. Some of the things up there, you'll see, where we, we look to find out what's out there. You know, pieces of wood, which are very dangerous to people with boats and jet skis running around. There's a lot of large pieces of wood out there. They can be very dangerous. Tires, styrofoam, balloons, that's something you can help us out with. We always tell our students when they come to Splash, balloons are like birthday candles. Make a wish, pop the balloon, don't let it go because I can guarantee you, they don't go to heaven. We've had rabbis, priests, and you name it in there, and they all say, "No, you don't go to heaven by hanging onto balloons," and they don't go to heaven. So, please don't let them go. We find them 100 miles off the beach. They cause a lot of destruction and death for our wildlife. Plastic bags, 57,978 single-use plastic bags we pulled from the bay in that five-year period of time. Plastic bottles, 119,443. The glass bottles, 56,000 and change, and metal cans, 35,000 and change. Sarah, who helped put this slide to show together, we were talking in the office today, and the glass and, and metal cans, both of that comes from boaters and beach people to leave this left behind, which is, you know, not cool. Next slide, please. How much did that weigh? All that garbage? Again, Sarah, thank you for putting this together. One and a half Statue of Liberties, 83 quart fire trucks, and 69 elephants in five years' time removed from the bay. Your base. Next slide, please. All right, but last year, we had a pretty challenging year. Every year, we pick up over 100,000 pounds of garbage out of our bays. So, what it looked like, there's some nice pictures here, you can see. People always ask us, "What's the most significant thing or the craziest thing you've ever pulled out of the bay?" I tell them, "There is not one thing that has been made that we have not pulled out of the bay." From hot water tanks to TVs to hot water, to, you know, you're just naming this after TVs. These are just some photos of what our volunteers see on our boats. That's the closest boat to you guys over here. That's the East Rockway vessel. And that's down in East Rockway. That's just pictures of what the boat looks like. And the nice things you see out there. Next slide, please. Just more pictures of the type of debris that we remove from the bays. Next slide. Tires, we don't know how they get there, but they'd be finding a lot of them.
They go.
They're, I don't know how they get there, but like I said, there's a lot of stuff we find out there. We scratch our heads and go, "I don't know how I got out there." But, next slide, please. Lot of styrofoam from floating docks. And if you have boats on the water, you know all about floating docks and the foam they get removed, ripped out in storms. And we find styrofoam all over the place. And the problem with the trash out there is it sits on the salt marshes and it kills the spartina grass and it disintegrates the salt marshes quickly. So, getting that debris off the salt marshes and the spartina grass is very important to saving our salt marshes because our salt marshes are just unbelievable. They help us, you know, with storm impacts and with wildlife. Next slide, please. More garbage. Okay, bathtub, we found one of those behind the kitchen sink out there. Just a lot of debris, a lot of wood, and a lot of plastic. Next slide, please. Paddle boats, more garbage, some kind of construction that's not become. Next, next slide. Derelict boats we find out there. There's, off to the, the top right, there's a barrel full of abandoned fishing net, which was full of dead fish and crabs. So, it was good to get that out of the water. Next slide, please. All right, so, a lot of people leave their, they go to the beach and they leave their trash behind and there is nobody in, other than us, that's going to go out there and get it. So, if you go out and use the beaches, please just leave your footprints. Next slide. You know, volunteers, like I said, they've been pretty crazy. They go out there, they just, you know, cut up floating docks, they load their trucks up with the, with the, with the garbage and bring it over to the dumpster. And they're very dedicated and wonderful people, and you could be one of us, too.
Now you're going to get recruited.
You're going to get recruited. Next slide, please. All right, just one, this is an interesting photo of that little bird on the side there. That's a very young black-crowned night hound, but it was hunting for garbage and, hunting for food and all of that garbage. So, and the one thing, you know, I'd like you to think about is every other creature on the planet besides us has to find food every day and not be food every day. So, we can go to McDonald's and order a fish sandwich, but birds, crabs, all the other wildlife out there, they have to find their food and not be food. Next slide, please. That was one, a first for us. We found a love seat out there. We got a call from somebody that said, "You're not going to believe this, but there's a love seat over by Short Beach." Okay? I didn't believe it, but there it was. And our volunteers went out there and cut it up and, and brought it back. We find all kinds of crazy things out there, you know, dinosaurs. So, you know, it's just, like I said, you never know what you're going to find. Next slide, please. So, our volunteers are very dedicated, they work really hard, and it's like a trophy when they come home. Nancy's laying against a piece of styrofoam, pieces of boat, and those owls that people put on their docks and bulkheads, the frightened way seagulls, they don't work, by the way. We find a lot of them out there. Next slide. Yep, just more garbage. Keep going. Next slide. Oh, one, we did find a nice American flag up at our Massapeacon boat, and they had that on their, their boat all year. But like I said, it's a tremendous amount of garbage. Go ahead, next slide. A refrigerator, right? Jet ski dock, the bottom left slide was found in October. It's a skeleton hanging in a metal cage, and that was on our East Rockway boat. So, that is quite a souvenir they found. Next slide. Okay. So, that was all the collection data from last year. We removed 107,000 pounds of garbage from our bays last year, and you can see the types of things what we took out. We did see a reduction in, in single-use plastic bags, which Adrian and I know, and the rest of us are all very happy about. We used to average about 12,000 to 15,000 bags every year being pulled out of the bay. And last year was the first time we saw a significant drop in that. We're hoping that trend continues. Next slide, please. All right, how does all that garbage get out there? If you could take one other thing away from here tonight, no matter where you live, up here in Valley Stream, once a piece of garbage goes down a storm drain sewer like in the top there, it goes into underground piping. And middle slide, you see that pipe? All of it gets discharged into our bays. So, if you throw a cigarette butt out the window on Sunrise Highway, eventually it will find its way down to the South Shore bays because that's how they move all the storm water from Long Island. They move it south in the topography. Everything ends up in our bays. There's the two other pictures there. There's those ponds by the Southern State Parkway. I live in Freeport. Freeport, we have the Metta River Parkway, discharges a massive amount of trash and debris into our area. So, just as I said, I know it's not cool sometimes to pick up garbage, you know, but it really would help us out a lot and put us out of business. All right, next slide. The impacts on wildlife. One of the reasons I do what I do at Operation Splash is I've spent a lot of time underwater. I was scuba diving for the fire department, recreational diving. I have a different perspective than most people. But the wildlife that we have out there, any of you, if you take the time to go out to the beach, it's just incredible, but, you know, above and below the water. And that's a picture of a dead comorant that was tangled in a fishing line. The bottom picture is a swan that had a lobster claw rope band caught under its bottom beak and its tongue was caught over there and it couldn't eat. So, we had to tackle the swan and get the rope band out. Anybody who's tried to mess with a swan is not easy. Tarabac turtles in there and all kinds of garbage. Ospreys, we turned the ospreys. Every single osprey that we see out in the bay has plastic in it. And the top picture is a baby swan, a signet. People dump oil down the storm drains and young waterfowl, their feathers don't have all the necessary repellent in it. They absorb oil. So, there's five baby swans that were drowning. We saved three, two drowned. So, don't come by oil. And it was cooking oil, by the way. People dumping cooking oil down storm drains, not just motor oil. Next slide. Okay, plastics, microplastics, that's been in the news a lot lately. And these are just some of the things we want to talk about. That's a, a plastic wraparound pole, but you can see, I don't know if you can see, but that's all little pieces of plastic from the tide level that are wrapped in the bay floating around. That's a plastic aqua-fine water bottle. It's starting to grow seaweed. There's a nice plastic chair, but it's covered in seaweed. Everything will eventually have seaweed and algae growing on it and it starts to smell like food and taste like food, and then it gets eaten by our wildlife. Next slide, please. All right, some solutions. Like I said, if you see, you know, trash in front of your house, I, I said, I give garbage grabbers to my nieces and nephews and my relatives. That's what they get for birthday presents, is go out there and pick it up and get rid of it. Because if, once it gets out into the bay, it's very expensive and a lot harder to get. And now, with all the whales and dolphins that we have right offshore in the oceans, I said, it's, it's really important that we keep our trash out of their homes. Next slide. One of the ways we've been fighting Freeport where I live, one of the ways we try to reduce the amount of trash that makes its way into the canals and bays and oceans is they have something called catch basin inserts. That's on the left-hand side. That's a brand-new installation on Norfolk Mile. If anybody's been down Freeport on Norfolk Mile, pretty good party place. And six weeks later, the slide on the right is what it looked like. So, that, all of that other, all of that trash would have been in the bays, but it got caught in those inserts and they get cleaned out. Next slide. Education is another very big part of our program. My kids got me to wear my seatbelt and quit smoking. And if they can teach somebody like me to do something like that, maybe we can teach other people. So, we have a very robust education program. We take corporations and a lot of school kids out to teach them about their environment. And once they go out, even, like I said, we're talking to you now, it's like blah, blah, blah. But when you take somebody out on a boat and you, they see the amount of garbage that's out there, they come back changed. So, that's part of where we do our education. Next slide, please. That's just a nice picture we think we throw in there. Same thing, that's Metta River Parkway, that's one of our boats. I said, "There is no place we don't go hunt trash." Because the old salt marshes are full of wildlife, ducks, geese. I mean, it's magnificent place out there. And we go get it, we go get the garbage. Next slide. Another nice picture. And that's it. Thank you.
So, we have heard from our legislators, we've heard from regulators, we've heard from water suppliers, environmental groups, and volunteers. And the common theme is they're all here dedicating their careers to help protect our health and give you quality of life. So, I hope that some of you have had a chance to write your questions down and give them, you're going to come up here and give them to me. If you haven't had a chance, you can do so now. And I'm going to read off some questions so that we can have our panelists answer some of these questions. And while I'm doing that, I just want to, you know, thank everybody on this panel and especially our legislators who have, you know, worked so hard to make New York at the forefront of, you know, protecting public health and passing, you know, what I consider to be and what all of us consider to be landmark legislation and being ahead of everything. Some of this, you know, like, some of the things that you've heard here today, legislators' lodges and some of our assemblywomen here that are here tonight have, you know, worked bipartisan. And it is possible to do so because it's water, we all drink it, and it is possible to, to get this stuff done. So, I want to thank them for that. All right. Okay, the first question I have is regarding PFAS or other bad chemicals, what precautions or measures can we take at home or around to decrease the level, if any? For example, would filtering or boiling help? So, who wants to take this question?
Well, I'll just-
You can start.
I'll chime in, yes. Well, first off, I just want to say, especially when 1,4 dioxide was in the news a lot, there was water purifying companies running around saying, "Buy a water purifier, it's going to take out 1,4 dioxide." And they were lying. So, yes, as shocking as that is, well, so, please don't believe that a little home water purifier can take out 1,4 dioxide. It's actually very expensive to remove, as you heard earlier from, from Liberty folks. It's, there's a few things that take it out, but it's a sophisticated new technology called AO, advanced oxidation. It's expensive. So, I would say to you, look, I mean, let me just be candid. We, we get our water tested here on Long Island frequently. The Department of Health is very judicious about looking over that data. So, I mean, at home, I use a little Brita just to give myself a little extra support and comfort. But, but we really do have a very rigorous system here that tests and treats our drinking water, which is the good news.
Anyone else want to chime in?
We would agree. Is it working now?
Did the others want?
Can you hear me now?
So, yeah. So, as Adrian said, small point-of-use filters in your home are not going to be effective on 1,4 dioxide. The good news is that we, we have one treatment system in operation. It's in Wantaw. And I, I wouldn't be concerned about drinking water. It's rigorously tested and it meets all the standards. As the standards change, we either will install treatment or take the well out of service until treatment's installed.